A 15th Special Session? The more relaxed than... March 29. If First State give the order of the 15th Special Session, House of Delegates eleven will be approved. I'm going to do more order. We need to declare the board of directors, the board of members, and the other more order of business are to talk. The delegate will call.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Delegate Arurang.
Oi.
Delegate Gibbons Junior. Delegate Culiver.
Oi.
Floor Leader Kanai. Delegate Kamsong. Delegate Marino. Speaker Ngiraywet. Delegate Niratkak Kanai.
Oi.
Delegate Ongidobla.
Oi.
Delegate Otobdo. Delegate Lulko. Delegate Sinzak.
Oi.
Delegate Solaply.
Present.
Delegate Talley.
Oi.
Delegate Umetaro.
Oi.
Mr. Speaker, my dear forum.
Delegate Maria Corum, my dear, I'm sorry to declare the board of members. Delegate for State visit to Attovee, Marar Eli. The floor leader, my Speaker, my dear, are to talk. Delegate Otobdo, my dear, is to go. Delegate Son Sorola, my dear, is to go. There are access to the floor, the board of members. Directly the delegate, the orior. The delegate, the member, the delegate, the hour. This is the House of Delegates. For meeting, see how it PPU. The board of members directly the delegate, the board of members. And return, Kim, we did. The delegate, the delegate, the 15th Special Session. The purpose, the member, to be the agenda of the House of Delegates. And this is the clock to tell. A supplemental budget. The purpose, the board of members, Special Session are to talk. The board of members, my dear, we, my dear, we. And the floor leader, the access, the board of members. And we need to delegate, my dear. The delegate, Kamsong, the acting floor leader are to talk. So, we should give the room, for the floor. The board of members, the delegate, my dear, are to talk.
Mr. Speaker, I'm going to talk more, I'm going to declare. I'm still at the hall. I'm going to board the item four, for adoption, for journal. The adapter for state journal, for 14th regular session.
The second, the adapter of the journal, the second. The board of members, the board of members. On top. The floor leader, the adapter.
The speaker, I'm going to board the item four, the B. And the different journal, the 15 day journal, the 14th regular session.
The motion, the second. The different journal. The board of members, the so different, the way. On top. The floor leader.
The speaker, I'm going to board the item five, Presidential Communication. The president, the member, the board of members. The April 25. The board of members, accompanied by a resolution, the board of members. Appropriate part of the address. The board of members, the president, the member, the board of members. Agreement. The board of members, the oral, the government, Taiwan. Legal assistance in criminal matters between the government, Taiwan. And the resolution, the speaker, the board of members. The President's Communication, the number three, I see. Supplemental budget. Twenty twenty four, the speaker, the board of members. Budget. More, Departmental Communication, item six. The Ministry of Finance, the board of members. The contact trust fund investment account. The certification of budget authority. The Speaker, item seven, the communication number eighty seven. The board of members. The resolution, the legislature, the resolution number twelve, the story seven. The board of members. Speaker, the board of members. The item eight, the Senate Communication, the total of eleven. Communication, the Senate, the speaker. And the appointment of the president, the Senate. The board of members. WAPNCC, Pension Trust Fund, PPUC, PPLA. Parole Board, EQPB. Palau. PSCC Board of Directors, the submarine cable. The speaker, the eleven. The speaker, the eleven, appropriate part of the agenda. Raise concerns, or comment. The item twelve, the calendar, the full reading. The passage, House Bill number eleven, one thirty four, fifteen S.
The motion, the supplemental budget. For full reading, the second. The title.
House Bill number eleven, one thirty four, fifteen S. The board of members, the board of members. The appropriate, the board of members. The National Dressery, the General Operations, capital improvements. The fiscal year, September 24, 2024. The board of members. The board of members. The president, the board of members.
The title, the way. Because the all. The members, the board of members. The supplemental. The electronic communication. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members.
The board of members. The board of members. The floor leader, the delegate, Kamsong. The board of members, the board of members. 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 The speaker, basically. The supplemental budget, the authorization. Appropriate, the most appropriate, the board of members. The board of members. Full supplemental, the board of members. Emergency funding. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The supplemental, the board of members. The board of members. The compact fund. The 11, thirty one. The board of members. The board of members. The compact fund, the 15 million. The president, the member, the board of members. The compact. The board of members. The compact fund, the speaker. The board of members. Basically, the 20 million, the compact argument. The additional 2 million, the board of members. The compact argument, the maintenance fund. The 1.4 million. The additional 20 million, the infrastructure fund. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the supplemental budget. The board of members. The board of members. The section two. The 2 million. The board of members. The board of members. The compact argument. The board of members. The board of members. The compact. The board of members. The items, the budget. The authorized, the anticipated, the compact. The appropriate. The additional, the board of members. The president, the board of members. The board of members. The 78,000. The YouTuber, the member. The seat. The president, the speaker. The board of members. The items, the supplemental. The 11, thirty one. The 10,000. The authorization, the appropriate. The board of members. The Bellows Games. The Micro Games. The additional 70,000. The president, the board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The judiciary. The board of members. The judiciary. The board of members. 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 The independent state, the board of members. The overall, the board of members. The 11, thirty one. The activation, the authorization, the appropriation. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. 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 The speaker.
The chairman, the board of members. The delegate, Ngiray.
Speaker, I'm going to talk about the chairman. I'm going to talk about the board of members. I'm going to talk about the internet. The leader, the speaker, the internet. I'm going to talk about the board of members. The president, the board of members. 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 The chairman, page 11. The board of members. The board of members. The minimum wage, the house. The president, the minimum wage. The board of members. 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 The speaker.
The delegate, the board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the budget, the 10,000. The board of members. The board of members. The supplemental, page ten. Section eighteen. Line fourteen. The board of members. I'm going to talk about the board of members. The president. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The fact, the fact. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. 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 The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. 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 The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. The speaker. The speaker. The full reading. The mode two. The board of members. On top. The board of members. The full reading, assign the board of members. Floor leader.
The speaker, I'm going to talk about the full reading. The board of members. The item, resolution. The House Joint Resolution 11, sixty nine, fifteen S. The speaker, only the short wishes.
Short wishes. The session, the board of members. The 11 o'clock. The resolution. The board of members.
The board of members. The item thirteen, the referral. The referral, assign. The House Joint Resolution 11, sixty nine, fifteen S.
Okay. The resolution, the referral. The title.
House Joint Resolution number 11, sixty nine. Fifteen S. The House Resolution, the ratified agreement, mutual legal assistance. Criminal matters, the government, Republic of China, Taiwan. The necessary successful accession, the treaty. The House Resolution, the board of members.
The title, the way. The resolution, assign the board of members. In human rights. The chairman, the doctor. The board of members. Floor leader.
The speaker, I'm going to talk about the resolution. The adapter, House Joint Resolution 11, sixty eight, fifteen S.
The motion, the joint resolution. The title.
House Joint Resolution number 11, sixty eight, fifteen S. The House Joint Resolution, six joint session, eleven will be approved. The board of members. The president, the board of members. Address, April 25, 2024, Senate Chamber, Chapter 3. The House Resolution, the speaker, Anastasio.
The title, the way. The discussion, the adoption, the House Joint Resolution. The speaker. 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 The delegate, the board of members.
The speaker, I'm going to talk about the adoption. The president, the state of the republic. Report 25, the uniform. The adoption.
Yes. Yes, I'm going to talk about the constitution, the president. The specific time. Actually, the specific time. The board of members. The board of members. The discussion. The board of members. The resolution. The president, the board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The 2024. The board of members. The way. On top. The resolution, the board of members. The floor leader. The speaker. The board of members. The board of members. Floor leader.
The speaker, I'm going to talk about the item 15. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The fundraising event. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. Over 96,000 dollars. Chairman, the board of members. 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 The best result. The commend, the speaker. The board of members. The office, the best result. The board of members. The item 15, the report, CSPP Pension Plan. The board of members. The board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the item 16, miscellaneous business.
The miscellaneous business, the delegate, the board of members.
The speaker, I'm going to talk about the resolution. The dimensional. The board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The president, the progress of administration. The board of members. The board of members. Pension, the civil service. The board of members. The board of members. The plan, the 3 million. The board of members. The support, the pension. The board of members. The next page, the market value. The board of members. The market, the market. The board of members. 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 The board of members.
The delegate, the board of members. The board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. The board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the board of members. The board of members. The board of members. The miscellaneous business. The board of members. The board of members. The travel reports. The weekly, the share. The board of members. The speaker, I'm going to talk about the delegate. The board of members. The board of members. The orior. The APPU, Palau National Group. The delegation, the prime. The 52nd General Assembly. The 86th Council Meeting. The Asian Pacific Parliamentary Union. The board of members. The board of members. The 29 Parliament. The Asia Pacific. The board of members. The board of members. The Congress, the Parliament, the Asia Pacific. The influence, the affect policy. The Asia Pacific region, the member countries. The board of members. The 1965. The Asia Pacific Union. The 1975. The board of members. The Asian Pacific Parliamentary Union. Because of COVID, the in-person assembly. Long after five years. When the originating member countries. The 52nd General Assembly. The 86th Council Meeting of the APPU. The meeting. The climate change, prevention and mitigation for large. prevention and mitigation for large scale disasters. The tsunami, earthquake. Natural disasters affect the blue. Especially, the Taiwan. The October and the president submitted the country report, the resolution. economic recovery. The president improvements interconnectivity. Taiwan, Korea, Taiwan, Korea, Thailand. The president will be here. The economic recovery, the COVID. The The transportation, cargo. The president will be here. The recovery. The economic system. The president will be here. The assembly. The host of the The president will be here. first assembly after the host. Next year. The five original members. Taiwan is the host of the meeting. Next year. The resolution will be here. The central secretary at the office. The APPU. president. With effective networking, the member countries. The especially, the president. The president. The president. The return trip. The will be here. The president. The The participating events. The president. The
president. The The president. The president. I believe, the delegate.
Speaker, I am sure. On March fourteen. P P U C, the groundbreaking. It is the P P U C. The started the installation of the three. Forty four point five K V transmission line connected. Substation connected. The will be here. Over four hundred new poles. The sixteen million. The section will be here. president will be here. Forty four point K V. president will be here. The will reduce the power loss. While the overload will be reduced. The insulation will help reduce the capacity. The power outage. In the event of existing The president completed the project in June twenty twenty five. sixteen million. The power loss will be reduced. system power loss because of one way will be reduced. The power will be reduced. At the same time, it will reduce the power outage. The be The president will be here. The completed The project reduced. The substation. Speaker, I believe.
Yes, I believe, the delegate.
The president has been here. The has been here. staff will be specialized fielder to continue education. Improve the doctor and professional staff to continue education, specialized fielder. For the good and better health and benefit. The
president. The delegate. I believe.
Speaker, the president is the president. The
I believe, the delegate. I believe, the delegate. I believe.
The president has been here. The chairman, the vice chair, the committee of the committee. Miscommunication number two eight one. The president has been addressed to the president, Sir Ralph Wipps Junior. The president of the Senate, the president of the pension plan. The president has been here. Investment February. Twenty five million. Compared to the previous month, January. The president has been here. The still four hundred thirty thousand. In order, the benefit. Monthly benefit. The plan. The ninety nine million. Ninety nine thousand four hundred forty eight dollars. less than fifteen years. The president supplemental. The Senate, the House, the president of the eleven thirty one. Retirees
I believe, the delegate.
The I believe, the speaker.
I believe. The I believe, the